Before this, this meeting, this opportunity to conduct the business of this city. And we pray that it's done in a way that is respectful, that is dignified, that makes you and all the other residents of this city proud. We ask God for your blessing upon the Olive family. Continue to strengthen them. Be with them during this time. Pray that you would keep our residents safe as we're dealing with record heat. We thank you for that. We also pray now for our children as they're getting ready to head into another school year. We pray that this will be one of the most fulfilling ones for them. And we ask your blessings upon us tonight, knowing that you can solve any issue that we're facing. We ask these blessings in your son, blessings in your son Jesus' name. Amen. Councilman Harrington.
May I join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, councilman. All right, we have a skeleton crew here with us today, but we're gonna, we're able to get the business of the city done anyhow. Our next item on the agenda is reading and approval of the minutes from our July 11th, 2022 meeting.
May I make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of July 22? I'm sorry, of the minutes of July 11. And adopt those.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to dispense with the reading and to adopt the minutes from our previous, most previous meeting on July 11. Counsel, any comments or questions about this? Are there any public comments about this particular item? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Hamilton, roll your vote.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right. And motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is up for final is planning and zoning. It's number forty-three of 2022. And that is Councilwoman at large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero four three of 2022 is the ordinance, amending ordinance number sixty-four of 2001 by changing zoning classification of the property of 315 Williams Avenue, Williams Avenue. This ordinance was introduced on July 11, 2022 and published at the Natchitoches Times on July 14, 2022. And may I move for adoption of ordinance number zero four three of 2022.
I'll second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve this ordinance. And we see a picture here. I know the trees are kind of in the way, but they're gonna use this as, as Shantrell explained, as a rental property as well. It's, it's, it's the VRVO, right? Think that we're doing with this, okay? So, yeah, it passed through the planning and zoning process previously. Additional comments, questions, counsel? Are there any public comments or questions about this particular ordinance? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Hamilton, roll your vote.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. All right, next movement on the agenda is, counsel, I would ask that we would make a motion to remove this next ordinance to a later date.
May I make a motion that we table ordinance number zero four, zero four two?
Second. We got a second? Our motion was made and made to table it and second it as well. Alex, did you want to briefly explain while we are doing this?
Yes, we submitted proposals to different local banks. And inadvertently, I think one of the banks was left off the script. So, we learned that before the receiving of the final proposal. And we want to offer them an opportunity to give us some numbers to compare with the proposal we received from one of the banks.
Okay. Comments or questions, counsel, about that? All right? Any public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Motion to move of the agenda, roll your vote, Mrs. Aziza.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right, that has been successfully tabled. All right, next ordinance which is found as well is ordinance number forty-four of 2022. And that is Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-four of 2022. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchez, Louisiana to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Historic District Business Association Incorporated, providing for an automatic annual renewal, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for a repealer and effective date of ordinance. And I move to adopt ordinance number forty-four of 2022.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made to adopt and has been seconded as well. This particular ordinance pretty much is straightforward. How it's written, this is to continue the agreement with the Historic District Business Association. And I think it's been a beneficial agreement for the city. Last time, last meeting, we know some of the specific events that are planned by HDBA. The Christmas Festival, the car show, and I think there's another few that are planned as well. So, any comments or questions, counsel, about this?
Yeah, it's a good relationship.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, that we may be more diverse with this particular endeavor that we're doing.
Okay. Any public comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Hamilton, roll your vote.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. All right, the next three items on the agenda, ordinances that are for introduction. With the first, one of the three being read by Councilman Harrington. It's on you, sir.
This is ordinance number forty-five of 2022. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchez to award the bid for West Natchez Water Main replacement, phase one. Four bids were received. And the appointed committee members unanimously recommend the city award the bid to the lowest bidder, who is pulley construction, in an amount of $669,000. This is for introduction only.
Okay. Matt, is there, are there any additional comments you would like to make at this time? Again, it's Councilman Harrington said just introduction.
Yeah, this is for our next phase of our water main replacement. We'll, we'll be replacing some of the existing cast iron and galvanized water mains in the city of Natchez. In this phase, we're replacing close to 6,000 feet of twelve, eight, and four-inch waterline with all new PVC and five new fire hydrants in that area. Yeah, it's just a step towards getting rid of that cast iron.
Six thousand feet, what is typically the average on a project like this for water mains?
As far as.
Yeah, is it typically six thousand or is it?
Yeah, I mean, and it depends on the area, how big your right of ways are, kind of. This area, the right of ways are pretty small, so that slows the work down and you typically see the prices go up a little bit. But, you know, six to eight thousand is, is a good number.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any other comments or questions? Again, as much as we could do these projects, it's, it's great, it's, it's, we've stated it before. It's always, you, you got more need than you have money to meet it. But I'm glad we're able to, to address it here. And we'll certainly want to continue to try to budget and replace these cast iron pipes in other areas of the city as well. So, again, we'll see this on the agenda on our August 8th meeting. Okay? All right, next item on the agenda is introduced as well, as I said earlier. It's read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-six of 2022. An ordinance creating the Texas Street Economic Development District, state of Louisiana, defining the boundaries thereof, appointing special counsel, and otherwise providing for, with respect thereto. Whereas the governing authority of any municipality in the state of Louisiana may create an economic development district composed of territory wholly within such municipality pursuant to the provisions of Part Two, Chapter twenty-seven of Title Thirty-three of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950, as amended inclusive. And whereas the city of Natchez, acting as government authority of the city of Natchez, state of Louisiana, has been requested to create an economic development district, including those tracts, pieces, parcels of land situated and located wholly within the city limits bordered by West Texas Street, West Third Street, Sabine Street, and Dixie Street, having the specific geographical boundaries set forth in Exhibit B attached, which is hereby incorporated herein and made a part of this ordinance all pursuant to EDD Act. And whereas the city council introduced this ordinance in written form July 25th, '22, and a notice describing the boundaries of the proposed Texas Street Economic Development District, state of Louisiana, was published twice in the Natchitoches Times, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. And this is for introduction.
As counsel, you know, Mike Busada has been the one who's kind of implemented these districts for us with the River South Common, E Common's EDD, also with the Hobby Lobby district as well. He's working with us on this one also. And Mike has had a traffic issue, I guess a car issue, if you will. So, I do have some notes that Mike sent over that I just want to state on tonight, okay? The ordinance tonight is just for introduction. When the ordinance comes up for a final vote in two weeks, it will establish the district, but will not commit the city to anything specific at that particular point. Over the next few weeks, we will work with the developers, determine the level of economic incentive that is reasonable and necessary for this project. And once we agree upon the incentive, we will come back to the council with a resolution authorizing the incentive. And one of his, his last point was that this is the same process that was utilized for the River South Commons project. Okay? So, again, I just wanted to share that. Now, Mrs. Selly, I didn't say earlier, this is an introduction. Yeah, so, but when it's time to vote on it, which would be in two weeks, actually, I think it's three weeks because of, it's the fifth, we got a fifth Sunday here. Well, thank you. I appreciate those remarks. Okay, counsel, any comments or questions from you?
No, it's a good, I look forward to seeing it unfold. It'll be a good project.
And I think we, we, you know, the Morfets are submitting to us, and they've been good about it. Franchise agreements that they've worked with so far. So, we're in the process of collecting those. And again, like you said, I think it's going to be a really good project on Texas Street. Okay? Again, that's just for introduction. Next item on the agenda is also for introduction today. And it's read by Councilwoman at large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number forty, zero four, zero four seven of 2022, which is an ordinance to deem property surplus and authorize the donation of surplus property owned by the city of Natchez and to other provide with respect thereto. Whereas further, the town of Boys sometimes herein after referred to as the town, municipal, is located in the state of Louisiana, parish of Rapids, and is a political subdivision of state of Louisiana. And whereas the city owns the following, owns the Christmas lights decorations. Whereas further, the city no longer needs the above lights and should be deemed surplus, obsolete or unused for present and future city needs. And where, and whereas the city is authorized to donate movable property determined to be surplus to political subdivisions. And whereas further, the town of Boys has expressed a desire to acquire the lights for, for their use in their town. And now therefore be it further ordained by the city council, the city of Natchez, we convene that the above property is deemed no longer needed for city purpose and is declared surplus property. And Mayor, this is for introduction only.
Matt, is there any, you know, pun intended, light you can share on this particular?
These are some older bulbs that have been sitting around for many, many years. Most of them are glass bulbs, which we no longer use, the old incandescent bulbs. There are a few older set pieces that are kind of bent up, but could be of use to somebody. Just a lot of things we've had laying around for many years. Felt it could be of use to, to some other municipality. They want to use it for their Christmas decorations.
And just because I know it was expressed to me before, maybe Matt, you and Ed perhaps can tag team it. Have we sold surplus property before or what have we typically done?
Usually given.
In those cases?
I don't know.
No, we, we did it just a few years ago with the old lawnmower to the village of Natchez. That's the only other one that comes to my mind recently. It's maybe been three or four years ago.
Okay.
Beyond that, nothing, nothing I can recall.
Well, I know the fire department donated some, something.
Yeah, we've donated to the fire department.
The ordinance says be it further donate, be it further ordained that the items described be donated to the town of Boys on an as-is basis without warranty or recourse.
Right. Right, so I just kind of wanted to, because this is introduction, we obviously want the council and department heads to, and so the general public will have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments when it comes up for a vote on this particular instance, so. Okay. All right, counsel, any other questions or comments about this? Again, it's just introduction only at this point, so. All right, we've got a couple resolutions on the agenda next that we're going to address. The first one is Resolution Number Sixty-Six of 2022. That's Councilwoman at large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero six six of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the water distribution and production system improvements. Powhatan Connection Track, Contract One, Water Well. Potable Water Improvements, SCC Project Number Thirty Eighty. This is bid number zero six five one. Whereas the city wishes to advertise for bids for the water distribution and production system improvements of Powhatan Connection. Whereas sealed proposals shall be addressed to the city of Natchez Office of Director Purchasing, Purchasing Department, 1400 Sabine Street, Natchez, Louisiana, seven four five seven. And whereas the city of Natchez will accept sealed and electronic bids for the project until 2:00 PM on Thursday, August 25th, at the office of the Director of Purchasing, located 1400 Sabine Street. Whereas upon receipt of proposals, the committee of Clarissa Smith Brown, Finance Director Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing Dale Nielsen, Councilman and Matt Anderson, Utility Director, are to review and make a recommendation of the bids received. Now therefore be resolved by Council City of Natchez, Lieutenant Ronnie Williams, Mayor, Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor, being hereby authorized, empowered and directed to order the publication of above bid. And Mayor, this is for.
It's for a vote.
It's for a vote, okay.
So, Matt, can you kind of put this in layman's terms for us?
Yeah, this is for a project that we got a grant for. Several years ago, LDH contacted the city of Natchez about the poor condition of the Powhatan Water System and wanted to know if they would give us a grant, could, would we be willing to be a backup emergency supply for Powhatan? So, they got the grant for us, and, and this is in two parts, it's this resolution and the following. It's in two parts. So, with the grant, we're building a pipeline to Powhatan, like I said, as their backup emergency supply. And then we're going to also build a water well on a water well road to be a supplemental supply for the city of Natchez. So, in the event that we do need to supply water to Powhatan, they'll probably, with the number of residents they have, they'll probably use about 20,000 gallons a day. And this water well will yield about 300,000 gallons a day. So, for all grant money, we're, we're seeing a supplement of, you know, 200, 275 to 280,000 gallons a day for the city of Natchez.
Have we thought about, Matt, and I, I should have talked to you earlier. What's the, the residential impact when you say gallons like that? About how many residents?
Well.
Uh, maybe we won't even look at it like that.
I think the national average that everyone uses is about 100 gallons, 100 to 120 gallons a day per person.
Okay.
So, that, that's the impact that, that, you know, the average person has on, on water supplies.
So, you can think about maybe 200 or so, a little bit over 200 homes?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. And any other comments, questions, counsel? All right, any public comments on Resolution Number Sixty-Six? Okay, seeing none. Roll your vote, Mrs. Hamilton.
Did we get a motion in a second for it?
Did we? We didn't get a motion in a second. We didn't, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve our Resolution Number Sixty-Six of 2022.
I'll second.
All right. Mrs. Hamilton?
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right, good catch. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Sixty-Seven of 2022. And that is Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Sixty-Seven of 2022. Resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the water distribution and production system improvements, Powhatan Connection. Contract Two, Water Mains and Site Work, LCDBG. Fiscal Year 2020 Potable Water Improvements. SCC Project Number Thirty Eighty, Bid Number Zero Six Five Two. Whereas the city wishes to advertise for bids for the water distribution and production system improvements, Powhatan Connection. And whereas sealed proposals shall be addressed to the city of Natchez Office of the Director of Purchasing, City of Natchez Purchasing Department, 1400 Sabine Street, Natchez, Louisiana, seven one four five seven. Whereas the city of Natchez will accept sealed and electronic bids for the project until 2:15 PM on Thursday, August 25th, 2022, at the office of the Director of Purchasing, 1400 Sabine Street. Whereas bids will be publicly opened and read aloud at two fif, 2:15 on Thursday, August 25th, 2022, held at the above mentioned office. Whereas upon receipt of proposals, the committee of Clarissa Smith Brown, Finance Director Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing Eddie Harrington, Councilman, and Matt Anderson, Utility Director, are to review and make a recommendation of the bids received. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Natchez and legal session convening that the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr. be and is hereby authorized, empowered and directed to order the publication of the above bid. And I move to adopt Resolution Number Sixty-Seven of 2022.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second that time. All right, Matt, is there any?
No, this is just part two. We decided to bid it in two different projects, all under the same grant. Our thinking was get better prices because once, one part of it is just simply laying pipeline. And then the second part is drilling a well. Those are specialized things, so we just had to do it in two different projects, but still falls all under the same grant.
Comments or questions for Matt, counsel? Public comments, questions? Thanks for the explanation, Matt. All right, seeing none. Mrs. Hamilton, roll your vote.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, and we're gonna turn it over to, I know it's, it says Ms. Clarissa Smith Brown, but it's Mrs. Clarissa Brown Smith. All right, so she's got our financial report for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, just kind of wanted to discuss our tax collections as of May. We hadn't got the reports to current, but we do have the reports to May. But before I get into that, I wanted to kind of speak about our ARPA Utility Assistance Program, which did very well. The public response was overwhelming. And we actually were able to expense out the $250,000 that was allocated to that program fairly quickly. We received over, I know, 800 applications and are still in the process of getting all those entered into the system. Most citizens should see that awarded amount on their next utility bill. So, it'll be a direct credit on their utility bill.
Did you say 800 applications, 80?
Eight hundred, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yeah, so it was, it was a great, a great response. So, I thank everybody that helped with that initiative. And I think it was a great benefit to our, the citizens. So, that was wonderful. Now, just to kind of discuss tax collections as of May, as I said before. So, when we're looking at the graph that's up right now, we are far exceeding the collections from last year, same time. We actually have collected 13.1 million dollars. Collections are up 10% over last year, so that was very good to see. The next slide should be law enforcement tax, which I'd like to take a look at that. If you look at it, we are down as far as comparative of last year to this year in the month of May. But collectively, for the year, we are still up $58,000. So, year to date, we have collected 1.1 million dollars. So, still looking good for the year. The next one is our TIF 2% tax, which is still trending upward above the previous four years. As you can see on that graph, we are up about 29% over previous years. So, that's wonderful to see such an uptick in tax collections. I know I'm going quickly, but if you have any questions, please stop me. And then that last slide that they're gonna put up is one that I like to take a look at for hotel occupancy. And that's the first portion of that chart. And we are up a whopping 42% same time last year. So, we are seeing definitely an uptick in tax collections, which that's great news overall for our economy. So, just wanted to share those figures, and that is as of May of this year. That's all I have.
And I would say, counsel, please forgive us for omitting that out of your packet, but we can email it to the council members.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get this to y'all, okay? So, you could see, I know it's hard to see on the board.
It's hard to see, thank you. Thank you for going over it, because.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm not sure if you noticed the article in the, it was in the journal, but it came from the chamber. But if you look at how Natchez compares to Elick-Ruston, they gave five, six different comparisons. And we're exceeding every one and every category exponentially right now on increases over last year.
Is that that dashboard report that the chamber puts out? It's, it's been a really good, I, I read through, I think they, they released one today. And, you know, unemployment is low, I think, generally, but we've got some really good numbers in terms of unemployment and, and, and things of that nature. So, the jobs are there, you know? We, to the point where we need the bodies to be there to fill those jobs, so.
That's it.
It's great, and we just want to keep it going as best we can. All right. Our next meeting is August 8th, all right, at. Our next meeting is August eighth, all right, at the same time. So there's a community, back-to-school community fair that I'm really excited about. Working with the governor's office, particularly Tina Semien Smothers, all right? Happened to be Councilwoman at Large's sorority sister, all right? But, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but really excited, there are twenty-five hundred bags. So these are not going to be necessarily backpacks, but they're going to be supplies. You know, bags filled with supplies. So we just really want to get the kids there. There's going to be free food. We got a couple food trucks there. I think we've got, what, two or three bouncing houses or something like that? Yeah, we've got a DJ who's gonna render some clean music for us. And then we've got so many tables set up, so many booths, so it's going to be really, really cool. Well, it's going to be hot, but it's going to be cool. But we actually do have Randy and his group, they're going to set up a couple cooling stations for us. So we want to really be cognizant of that water be there. It's looking like Saturday may be a little cooler than, a little cooler than, you know, some of the days we've seen recently. And when I say that, ninety-three degrees, but that's better than some of the temperatures we've been seeing lately. But really want to give the kids an opportunity to have the materials they need to. Oh, snow cones are going to be there as well, so please help us pass the word with this. We're going to do some more pushing on social media and getting some flyers out to, you know, to the residents. But, but help us with that.
Mayor, may I interject here? People were looking for that last Saturday. I had people calling me, they said the park was full. So I know the community is looking forward to this, so I, I know they'll show up this Saturday coming.
Right, right. So again, please help us to get the word out about that. So we got the last sip and stroll for this year. It says July ninth, but we've been using that same flyer, so it's really going to be the thirtieth, okay? So July third, so it's going to be the last sip and stroll. I think they've been going well in terms of, you know, the music and things of that nature. So come out, starting at six-thirty to nine-thirty and take part in some music and some food and, and things of that nature, right? All right, is that, I think that might be the last one, okay? And I'll just say, I shared a graphic on Facebook that, that Chief Nguyen sent over to me. And just, just take a look at that. We'll, we'll get it, it's not up here, but it's just kind of what to do in the heat and things of that nature. So we really want to be cognizant because we've seen some, a couple deaths in the parish, in our parish. But really hit home with us with Officer Olive. And I will say that N P D. and utility and fire department, everybody did great with paying respects to Officer Olive. And I was blown away about everything that was going on. One other thing I'll say, piggybacking on what Clarissa was saying earlier, while we're out of our funds in terms of two hundred fifty thousand local dollars from ARPA that's allowable, I was having a conversation with somebody recently about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It's a state program, but there are real dollars associated with it. And from what I'm told, it's not necessarily a whole lot of red tape to get through to get some of those funds. So if you know somebody who's really in need, I know it's called Emergency Rental Assistance, but it's also for utility assistance and not just rental assistance. So that is a really good program that I hope people in the city of Natchitoches would use. So just wanted to make sure we say that, we'll do another push about that program. All right? Okay, all right.
Mayor, before you reach, I would like to know, although Randy's doing some cooling systems this weekend, cooling stations, is it possible, because August is going to be pretty hot, that's usually one of the hottest months, that we could put up some cooling stations around the city of Natchitoches for these people? There are a lot of homeless people here. Maybe a good idea if we could look at putting some cooling stations up where they could at least go and cool off for a minute, if they got cell phones, charge them up or something like that.
Well, and I'm glad you brought it up. I have it on my list to speak with leadership, but is it McGrath at the library? Some cities are utilizing, utilizing libraries as a cooling station because they're public spaces already. And so that's one of the things I want to do, talk to her, see how we can make that more of an official effort to meet like what you're saying. You know, provide that space that's cool and also allow people to have those, charge their devices and, and things of that nature. So, yeah, that's one of the, I think the library will be a great place for us to, to make that official. But obviously, we need to talk to them about it, so.
Okay, great. Also, I'd like to ask Matt, if he could tell us a little something about the blank out this afternoon, this morning? Could you tell me what happened, Congressman?
Well, from what I understand, we're, we're in the process of changing some poles out around the bypass part of our loop feed. We have some poles there that are over thirty years old. So what we were doing today, we were going to kill that section out. So we were going to feed it, it, it's a loop around the city, so we were going to kill this section out to work on it. So feed it from this direction and this direction. Well, when we opened the breakers to kill that part out, it actually, the breaker that was now feeding everything that, that, that another breaker previously fed, it, it overloaded the breaker. Now, that shouldn't have happened, so we immediately, once we got it back on, we immediately called the consultants and engineers that programmed that, that breaker for us. And they're here now working to figure out why it happened. It should not have happened. So we think it may have been something as simple as a programming error, but they're working on it now.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt, for the explanation. All right, motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, all in favor? All right, meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.